Andrew, do you want F1?
F1.
F1. We have like, what's F1?
One.
We have all F1s. We have eight pages of F1s.
Celebrations.
Oh, got it.
We do.
It's our, that's our, technically, our second page of F1s. Okay, got it. Celebrations.
Celebrations, and then we'll do the second F1. Yeah.
And then we do F1. F1A.
Yeah.
Mayor, are we ready to go? All right, good evening, Council, to the third budget workshop for the 2022 budget season. Tonight, we are principally working on planning, development, assessment, code enforcement, and recreation, all programs supervised by Andrea Smith. When we're done with her programs, Angela and I have prepared a briefing with a little greater detail on the revenue sources, so we can all ensure that we're on the same sheet of music with where each of the sources of revenue come from, what the predictions are, how the projections were made, and how we reached the revenue proposals that we've given you this year. So without any further delay, we'll start with Andrea Smith.
Great, thanks. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So if we can start on F1, which I understand is your second F1, which is celebrations, we'll start just with recreation. I'm joined this evening by our newest recreational director, Mackenzie Cole, and also Public Works Director Shane Brown, because as you all know, we're sort of managing recreations somewhat differently than we have done in pre-COVID times. So they're both here to kind of provide some backup. So celebrations is pretty straightforward, although it's a new page, so something that you haven't seen in the past. It covers expenditures associated with supporting the Seaway Festival fireworks and things like music in the park or other types of celebrations that we might entertain throughout the year. Are there any questions on F1A?
Glad to see them.
Um...
Hold on a second. F1A?
Well, I just call it A, because I understand you have many pages that are tabled.
So there's a decrease in funding to the Chamber of Commerce?
Go flip into the next page, Jen. Run celebration.
Celebration?
Oh, so we skipped the... So what is that, $15,000 for? Oh, that's the festival, okay. Then is that a new budget item?
This is the new budget page, the page that you haven't seen in the past, although we have in the past supported these same costs. They've just been budgeted for in different lines on different pages.
So last year, we gave $15,000.
This, this covers the cost of the Seaway Festival fireworks, as well as other celebrations or celebratory things, including music in the park or concerts at the Dubisky Center.
So was there nothing in that line last year?
This page did not exist in your budget previous to this year.
So those categories that you mentioned, how much did we budget last year?
I believe that this year, we paid $10,000 to Seaway Festival, and we didn't, we were not able to do the music in the park or concerts.
So it's an increase of $5,000.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hang on a second. The money that will ultimately be given to Seaway Festival for the festival will likely come out of the Relief Act funds. So the entire page, as Andrea illustrated or said earlier, is a new page. So let's say all $15,000 is, is new money for this, this budget. The logic behind it really was just that, out on average, they're running $7,500 to $10,000 for fireworks. And then we, we have other things come up along this line throughout the year. I just want to be able to support festivals' functions, you know, things of like when, when they come up and if fireworks are more, you know, whatever. I, I think again, if I said nothing else, other than this money is there, so the city has some money budgeted to support the Seaway Festival in what, whatever manner we need to support it. It's, you know, I guess it's the major event of, of the year for the city, really, so.
So I think that money is supposed to go to the nonprofits and the businesses that lost money during COVID. I don't think the Seaway Festival Committee, is that the same money that we're talking about?
Yes, sir, good.
I don't, I think that should just come out of the general fund, whatever money we give to Seaway or these other groups, because was that the plan to take money from Relief Act and give it to these Augsburg Chamber, St. Lawrence County, and things like that? Pride and Beautification, Augsburg Command Performance? I know some of those groups have asked for money, so that's fine.
Let, let's do this. Let, let's, we talked about this last budget meeting, but I, I sort of knew at the end it was, we weren't, we weren't probably hitting solid, because nobody was asking questions, so we'll cover it again. Let's, let's let Andrea keep going with her part. So for, so her piece, the, the money for the Seaway Festival, I think, is, again, I think having $15,000 set aside for a major, supporting a major event like the Seaway Festival is, is well within our, our means and reasonable.
So the second F1 page is titled Other Cultural and Recreation Activities. The only, this is a total budget of $3,000. This is specifically to the host fee for the New York Bass Fishing Tournament that would be, we hosted this year, and it would be hosted next year, August 13th and 14th, which are a Saturday and a Sunday.
That was a very good time. You and I were down there, it was nice.
So again, it's a fee that we have paid in the past, or similar fee, but it's just kind of accounted for differently in your budget. Are there any questions on other cultural and recreation activities?
So the, what's the name of the tournament that we had the big committee for? FL?
Um, Major League Fishing.
Major League Fishing, right. So they, are they still in the, in sites? I know that last year, they were begging us to do the tournament here.
Well, the issue with Major League Fishing is they have a, a very significant host fee. $60,000 is what they were asking for 2020 originally. I think we negotiated it down to $50,000. I mean, the, the challenge with that right now is quite frankly, that the city of Augsburg itself doesn't have enough hotel space to really recoup that fee through, through bed tax. Most of the lodging would be outside of the city. And so while I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't consider these types of things, I think it's something that we should consider, as our city has more amenities to offer, that allows us the opportunity to recapture the host fee in terms of sales tax and, and bed use. So I think over the next five years, we should look at how to better be able to recapture that fee. That's a very significant fee. And $50,000 is, is what we were able to get them to in 2020, which is $10,000 savings from what they wanted. We also had to provide security and other staffing requirements in addition to the host fee. So it's pretty significant. I think, from memory, I believe that the total estimated cost to the city was going to be north of $110,000 to host that single event for one weekend. So it is not in the budget, and I would not recommend pursuing them at this time.
Good.
So we're going to move on to actual recreation.
The other, the other option of something like that, I think, is if we had a community-based fundraising.
Yeah, like the Chamber spearheaded it and, you know, set a goal and went out and raised it from those.
I think that was the plan in 2020, wasn't it?
Yeah.
$50,000 seed money, and then they were going to look to do a bunch of events, I think, around town to fundraise to.
Yeah. The Chamber, too, is, as we've discussed in the past, they are regrouping to a more county-wide kind of focus, and they have been successful at acquiring some market New York funding that has offset some of the costs for communities, including some of our costs for just the, the small bass tournament that we had this year. And I think that's something that they're looking to do, and I know the county has also had discussions about how to budget for those types of events throughout the county. I mean, I'm, I am not at all sitting here suggesting that we shouldn't continue to have a discussion, but I don't think that this is the year, nor do I think that probably next year is the year to, to have that type of a cost commitment in our budget to fund out of the general fund. I think it's definitely a partnership venture worth exploring further with other entities. So recreation starts on G1. So the goal of recreation going forward...
Did we miss some pages?
I'm just going over my budget, so recre, and we're starting with recreation. So this is the next page for me. G1.
So what about the other F1s covering that?
So we did that last, what?
We did last meeting.
Last, last meeting.
That was after I left. So the $15,000 on F1, the last page, home and community support.
I'd like to let Andrea keep going with hers.
So the goal of recreation is to really focus on providing more amenities for not just youth, but for all of our community residents. Mackenzie is a huge asset to our city staff and, and the county as a whole. She brings a wealth of knowledge with a sports management background to the recreational program. This year, and we'll talk more in depth, but just in a high level, she's collected some data that was presented to you on the sports camps that were offered. She's made some recommendations for some changes, for some additional camps, based on that feedback that you'll see reflected in the budget this year, as well as for some additional amenities, including an outdoor ice rink to supplement some of our other activities that we are already offering and have offered in the past. So she is here this evening to answer any of your actual recreation-related questions, because I am not really very recreational myself, but, but she is. So G2 is pretty basic. There's just the salaries there associated with that position.
Yes, my question is, if it's a coordinator and our assistant city clerk is making more than that, I would just think if she's like, kind of entitled to the programming, how did we figure out her actual salary? Is there like a scale that was used from the county or?
This is based on the CSDA contract, grade, position 10, and it's comparable with other recreational directors.
I'm just asking.
Sure, I'm happy to answer. So it's comparable with the other salaries that are offered for the same position across the county.
Okay, I just was curious. I knew like with the clerk's positions went up, I was just curious if this fell, like how would this fall in the next? I'm just familiar with the, the grades. I just don't want to lose people or have another similar situation where people take other opportunities once we get them trained and acclimated to our system.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So the director's salary?
So we don't have, we just have, we have coordinator.
It's called a coordinator. The position is a recreation director.
Okay. Those two are gone, and the coordinator is in. So they were on furlough?
They were not furloughed, they were abolished, Counselor.
They were what?
They were abolished.
Questions on salary?
So... All right, so she's not a department head?
Correct.
Okay, she works under you?
Correct.
Okay.
Recreation Administration is G3. We are in the process of moving offices, so there is the, you'll see some costs for acquisition of, of equipment and furniture to accommodate that move. The office is no longer located in the Dubisky Center. It has been relocated here to City Hall, and for the time being, this is working out quite well. Mackenzie specifically does float about the facilities and keeps track of all of them, so she does have an office that she is in, on and off throughout the day, but she's also keeping track of the parks, playgrounds, Dubisky Center, and arena as necessary. So she's, but her primary office is here, and this is now where we accept all payments for, whether it's biddy basketball, summer camps, et cetera, and payments are received right directly by the compterel's office. So it's a streamlined process, which I think is working out much better. But there are some costs for some, just to facilitate the move. Actually, we'll be, all be moving onto the main floor of City Hall. Right now, she and I both have offices on the second floor, and we'll be, we'll be moving in the new year, so that we'll all be having a combined office suite, which will facilitate better coordination between all of the departments you're going to hear about this evening. Capital Construction, which is A7020.330, that has a proposed cost of $22,500. This is specifically to make repairs to the pump house roof.
Very funny. Didn't smile, because I keep just bringing... Yeah, there's a power in the roof that's deteriorating. And that building's quite intriguing, like seeing inside.
So there wasn't any place to put it, so we put it in recreation. I mean, what's, what's the?
The pump house has always been in the recreation budget. It was, it is used for storage of recreational materials, equipment, things of that nature.
It's filmed right after.
Shane, I mean, just from a usage perspective, it's two-thirds recreation, equipment, seasonal holiday stuff. I, I went and looked, you know, we've had a discussion about what to do with it. It's an old building, it's going to need some repair to, to keep it going along, and there's, well, it's worth, it's worth a tour if we've got a few minutes one day to look. It's, it's really an enormous building, but we have a lot of stuff in there. So if we were to get rid of the building, we'd have to, we'd have to build something to put all the stuff. There's a lot of stuff in there, so, excuse me, so it's, I think it's, but the building's in good shape, sound. Getting the roof shored up will, will keep it for, we use it for storage. Shane and I talked about doing our best to spruce it up a little bit, make it look as good as it can. It is right there at the end of the trail, or ahead of the trail, whichever. So I think we'll make some, some improvements on it.
Nice.
I don't, is, Andrew, is it necessarily a historic building or anything?
It is. It is on the Historic Registry. It's also on our list of properties to have an asbestos survey, hazardous building material survey done on, just because that's one of the prerequisites that you have to have in place before you do anything, whether it's reconstruction or demolition, which we're not looking at, to be clear, for this building, but it's one of those documents that you have to have in place really before you can undertake much of any work. So it's something that we're looking at doing in 2022, so that we're able to advance any plans for reuse or reorganization of that in the future. Building maintenance, $13,000, that is associated with the Dubisky Center. Nothing in particular. It's just maintaining that, that building. That's kind of the high points on G3, but happy to entertain any specific questions on any of those line items. There are no questions. We'll move on to Parks, which is G4, which is salaries for seasonal workers associated with Parks Maintenance. And G5 is the actual Parks Budget. There's $500 allocated for overtime specifically associated with Seaway Festival and staffing needs associated with Seaway Festival. Specialized Equipment, $6,500. This is to support the development of an outdoor ice rink, to provide the, the actual equipment that's necessary to support that, as well as a little bit of lighting, et cetera, that would be needed for that. That's something that Mackenzie is excited to hopefully do this year. That is a weather-dependent item, but...
Where's it going to be? Where the old, the old ice arena was.
It's on to, is it over at Ark Street or in the marina?
Those are the two locations that we've talked about.
And if you did it over, you know, I'd say it where the Garns building is, we have sold it yet. If we did it for this year, could we, could Disney and Boni run over there?
We did talk about that. That was one of the locations that was first requested before we were kind of pursuing sale of that. So we've, we've shipped it away, but it's...
Oh, I didn't realize you had one. That's great. I, I think people are really enjoying.
Yeah, something we're really excited about. It's an alternative to the indoor skating for some people that might be more appealing than...
I personally kind of like Park Street. It's really kind of windy and cool down by the water, but, and having it located near the police station might be...
There used to be two or three of them in town. The fire department would put them in. They would go down at, at night with their trucks, and one guy would have a plow truck, and they'd plow it all up, and then they'd, they'd spray it down, and they'd maintain it all winter. And there was, there was one, I think, in every park almost, and under John Cruel, they, they said no more. But that was a long time ago.
It's something people have expressed an interest in, and...
People loved it, yeah.
I think Mackenzie has a great idea to try to bring one back and see how it goes.
Yeah, I remember it at Park Street, people liked it. You know, over, again, over at Garns, they would be able to use the bathroom facilities that lock, but they won't lock. I don't know if the police would, you know, what they use for restrooms there, you know? Just, but I, I think both of them are great.
Specialized Equipment is A7110.260. That is to replace equipment at playgrounds, slides, swings, things that are damaged. It's quite surprising to learn how expensive a single slide is. So that is what that line is. Capital Construction, .310 is for, that is associated with making changes to the Dubisky Center, Bauders Lounge, rekeying the FOB area. And Capital Construction is for replacing the failing pavers at the Dubisky Center in that sort of front entrance area.
What about capital equipment? What was that?
The Bauders Lounge.
That's the Bauders Lounge?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody use them?
The Bauders Lounge?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a key fob, because I have my boat down there. It's the, nice, the, the Dubisky's not open, you can go down there, you can use the restrooms.
Anybody else?
I know a lot of the boaters use it. Almost, I would say quite a few boaters have the key fobs.
Well, I think all of the boaters are issued a FOB.
Yep, everyone's...
And they have access to the restroom. There's the locked shower facilities. There's kind of a lounge area, washer-dry area.
What's the lease expense?
What's going on with the rental of the, the room down there for the?
The Dubisky, at the Dubisky Center? Oh, the concession or the actual community space?
Concession.
The win, the window is currently the tenant, and their lease expires at December, well, the end of the year, December 31st is their last day. They, he has until the end of his lease to provide us in writing if he wants to renew. He has the ability to renew non-competitively for three years. And I, we have, I have spoken with him. He has verbally told me he is interested in continuing his lease next year, but he hasn't given that to us in writing, but he has time to do that. I actually called him today, but I wasn't able to connect with him, so.
Is he still open?
I cannot speak to that, because he hasn't been when I've been down two times, but...
I talked to him before about that interior door maybe being modified into a half-door so he could serve people inside the building in the colder months.
I, last I spoke, he was not going to be up, he was going to be taking a break January to March, and then looking to get started again in April, which is, I mean, serving in the fall is, is new. That typically has, that is a slower time. So, you know, starting in the early spring would be consistent with what other vendors have done. But...
Yeah, that's good.
And if we could do something, if he wishes that, we could do something so he could serve inside and be open longer. He chooses in future, I'd be, I'd be great. I'd be all for that.
I will, I can look into that, and the only reason I questioned is because I know it is a steel door, and I don't know if it has a fire rating because of the equipment in there, but we can look into that. Are there any other questions on G5?
Revenue.
Sorry?
On revenue, the marina, how do we set the rate for dockage?
Five.
How, how, how do you compute the number? I mean, if we're putting $20,000 in the Bauders Lounge, we're putting all new docks, stuff underneath.
$300,000.
That's what I mean, and, and Jen's plastic plates over the, the things. I just think that, I don't know.
So the rate has been set in the past based on recommendations from the Recreation Commission. They have typically, it's, it's been my understanding that the director would have provided sample costs from other local marinas, and then they would review it, and the Recreation Commission would make a recommendation to the council. It varies. Obviously, it's based on per foot and whether or not you have electricity or non-electric slips, but that is something that the Recreation Commission would review annually. We don't presently have a Recreation Commission. The council will be presented with names for appointments at the December 13th meeting.
I just, I just think if, if you're going to pump $330,000 into it.
Yeah.
That you should be getting a little bit more out of it.
They can certainly, I mean, they, they were reviewed annually. It's probably time for them to be reviewed. So that will be on the list of things.
I think the 15% increase would be on line. We were doing some nice things, you know? Those docks, it was really sad, doing all, just going to have to walk out of them in a condition. I think that's something to consider.
And hopefully, we could get ahold of somebody early on before the weeds come in, and...
Yeah, that's another expense.
Schedule a, you know, a sequence that they just go in and do it, rather than have it wait till it's, you know?
He had someone all set up, and someone didn't. They got so booked up, they didn't come. But, but that is another expense. How much is? So if you went up 15%, you're looking at $6,000 increase.
Looking at like, that'd be about a $120 increase per average boat. I think my boat was 700.
Don't get people all messed up.
Which is...
We're actually more expensive than Poslers and the Tiki on the docks, so it is.
But, you know?
It's a great question. And like I said, I, that will, is on the list for the Recreation Commission to review, and I think, I mean, we didn't, we did not contemplate an increase for the year 2022, but I, I would fully expect that you would see a recommendation to change them for 2023.
15% increase would cover the, the cost of the need.
Well, it just seems like it's, you know, you're looking at almost 10 years to get, you know, to break even.
Sure.
And just on what you're presently taking in as revenues, and it doesn't... And just on what you're presently taking in as revenues and it doesn't, I mean, they don't measure out.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
So this is the fun part of recreation, starting on G-six. Uh, this is our recreational offerings for summer camps and winter programming. Um, I'll just give a little plug for anybody that's attending online that our biddy basketball registrations are now open and we'll be accepting those through December third. Um, that'll be offered for eleven weeks, December uh, fourth through February twenty-sixth.
Have we done anything with the scholarship programming Steve that I mentioned?
Yeah, well, um, can I get it out tomorrow? And I got about, uh, I got up twenty-five hundred dollars left from the scholarship money we got from the summer study.
I just think that even if someone mails in their application and they can just write it on their form that they would like to utilize the scholarship, we could just send them. I think we just need to do it as tactfully as possible because some people don't like to ask for assistance, but I think having it out there will be.
I was surprised we had solo callers.
I just think that we kind of got to it late, so I was kind of hoping to get it before a lot of people signed up or people waited till the last minute. Thank you.
Uh, so these camps are offered weekly throughout the summer. Um, track gymnastics this year, then one of the new camps is arts and crafts and we're hoping to coordinate uh, an arts and crafts camp with the Frederick Remington Art Museum. Uh, boys and girls basketball, a second new camp is volleyball, cheerleading, soccer, hockey, lacrosse, baseball and softball. And uh, Mackenzie, it would be great, I think, if you just wanted to maybe give a little high-level overview of the camps.
So we, um, sorry, scooch over here.
Yeah, if you don't speak right into it, they can't hear you at home at all.
Um, usually we have the supervisor be um, an adult, someone that has good knowledge of the, of the camp itself, instructors. I, we, Sheena and I try to have our workers that have knowledge of the sport. Um, they're the ones that try to help out as well with the younger kids. Um, they're a week long. Um, we start, I believe, in the end of June is what we did this past year. We ended in August. Um, ended up doing a survey after the sports camp this year and see how everyone thought about it. Um, they gave me good recommendations of what we needed to do or what they would like to see from us. Um, so I took initiative on that and one of them was arts and crafts is what we supplied to them. Um, I also had, but I had volleyball, um, I had uh, someone come up to me and she talked to me and she said, well, the only thing we have younger for volleyball is once you get to OFA, you start modified. And I said, that's a really good idea. I think we should get younger kids more involved in that first before they get up to modified so they can help the program of the varsity in the future.
We are, we are also going to look at how to uh, offer instruction um, of pickleball and tennis. The budget had already been submitted when we had um, received that commentary from council, which I think was really useful. I mean, they are our courts and so uh, we are gonna, we are still looking at how to offer that. Um, even if it's just to help promote someone that has the skills that wants to, you know, offer lessons at ten o'clock on Thursdays, so.
This guy is becoming quite a player right here.
Well, if you'd like to volunteer to instruct pickleball, we would love to work with you on that, counselor.
Um, I do think we can give volunteers. I know we could give volunteers if that would help.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we haven't lost either that comment. It, it just isn't reflected in the budget in front of you. Um, but we, we definitely do wanna, you know, make the best use of those courts, although they were used quite a bit this year, so it was really nice to see. Mackenzie has orchestrated acquisition of some wind screens, so I think it has made it a little better down there to buffer some of the winds off of the river, so that was good. Um, winter programs, we're continuing, restarting the offerings that we've had in the past. Again, we will collect feedback and, you know, probably anticipate changes in twenty-twenty-two based on the feedback we receive this year. Uh, but the offerings include biddy basketball. Again, that's starting December fourth. Uh, swimming, gymnastics and skating. Uh, swimming and biddy basketball are both, both hosted at OFA and the fees you see there, um, seven hundred for biddy basketball. That is the uh, rental of the gym space. And then the swimming fees, uh, fee is of eight hundred dollars. Um, the OFA pays the guards and then we reimburse OFA.
Is this um, equal to what we had before COVID? Is it increased? Is it the same?
We have, we have added two, um, we have added two new camps, which are the arts and crafts and volleyball, and we've increased the pay to the instructors.
Great to see coming back. It was pretty sad going. It's all taken away for a year.
And are all these geared toward children and youth or?
Summer camps are geared towards children and youth.
I know. I don't know if it's possible. When softball camp comes around again, I'd like to offer a high school group, like do three groupings next summer so we can talk about that. Because I think that I had a lot of requests for like seventh grade and up. Because there's nothing like that offered unless they play travel ball. So I think that might be an area we can look at too, because some of these, I, we, we constantly look towards the younger kids, but a lot of these, the high school kids, they don't have a lot of opportunities or their parents can't afford to send them to, you know, St. Lawrence, to a camp and things like that. So if we could offer something in the city, if there's like, or if there's a desire in that specific program to offer maybe some high school programming, um, it might be beneficial if there's a, if there's a, a desire for that. But I just know that I had several that more of towards the modified level, seventh and eighth graders that would have liked to be able to um, join. And if I wouldn't have had such a diverse group of younger kids, I probably could have added them on, but it wouldn't have been safe. So just an idea for next summer when we start brainstorming.
Yeah, uh, we did get some feedback in the survey. Um, there seems to be a lot of interest in offering some type of instruction or opportunity to do canoeing, kayaking. That would be for the, for an older age group. Um, that's something that we is not in this year's budget. Uh, because by the time we had kind of gotten the survey and collected that data, it was a little bit late to make it into the budget, but we are going to look at that and see how we might be able to offer that in the future or who we could partner with and. So that's something that would cater to an older age group, uh, but we just couldn't figure out how to get it into this year's budget. We didn't, kind of got that feedback a, a little late, but we're, you know, that's on our mind as, as something else and that's definitely appreciated.
Kind of miss that age group with things we offer, so.
Any idea how many kids we reach in total, not like counting them twice, I guess, like are there different programs, like? At all, at all the activities that you?
Oh, we're probably three hundred.
Oh, okay.
You get a lot of kids from Norwood coming in this summer to use camps.
Yeah, I had, I had.
Wow.
Two kids from Canton and two kids from Norwood who, parents drove them over every day for softball camp. I mean, that says a lot right there that if people are coming into the community and why they're here, their parents were running to the grocery store, they were, you know what I mean? So every little bit helps.
That's great. Do we have a two-tiered system in city, as far as fees?
We do not, counselor. Um, but we have talked a lot about that. Uh, and uh, when we get the Recreation Commission up and going, that's certainly something that we'll be talking with them about. Um.
Doesn't matter. I was just curious.
I, I will say that we really didn't get complaints about our fees. I don't think we heard at all. Yeah. Uh, are there any other questions or comments on recreational activities?
I would just like to, I mean, in general, I'd like to see some more open skate hours personally. I know I've, it's been nice, Mackenzie's, I'm putting them up on the Facebook um, group and I put it on my phone because my kids go to every single one of them. That's pretty much there. And I know they're, they're looking for some more rock and skates or something, a little, little more. I know, I saw, saw that, but I know that they might be a good source of revenue for the city because I know some of those clubs that do rock and skates, they make a thousand dollars in an, in an evening at a rock and skate. So in order to fund some of these other things or offer more programming, that might be a good way to generate some revenue for ourselves. I mean, even if we did like, um, I know I'll volunteer to go down and, you know, we could do like a city council rock and skate where we all take an hour and go down. It wouldn't cost the city anything besides the ice time. We donate an hour and we all go down and do it and monitor it ourselves. It would be good interaction with the community and if we can raise a thousand dollars. Plus, you know, I mean, you advertise that people will bring their kids down, so just an idea.
John should do two hours. Definitely a marriage. You gotta keep them on one.
Same, yeah.
Just an idea. I had for some revenue. I'm not, you're not, you can't fall on the ice. You'll break your head though.
Sheena and I were talking one day, uh, we would like in the sometime this year to do like a three-games hockey tournament. I know they did it in the past and I guess it did good turnout. Um, I also wanted to bring back uh, like skating with Santa this year as well and uh, I wanted to see how, since it's my new year or starting the position, I wanted to see how well scheduling and all that would go to. But I do plan on having um, another day, a week for public skating.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's just tough. It's tough right now, um, especially with COVID and all that. I have a lot of teams that are renting from the ice, so it's kind of hard to get in certain slots. They have a certain time that people will know about. And um, a lot of my workers that are in high school are playing sports too. So I have to mostly try to figure it out on weekends on times for them instead of trying to do it during the week.
No, that's fine. And I just wanted to give you one, a compliment really quick. I received a complaint last week during uh, Ogden's or, like, we were having a sponsored, like, an open skate and I had a complaint from a parent who called Mackenzie and let her know the complaint. She took care of it in like thirty seconds. She called the worker and the two kids that were vaping on the ice were gone in like thirty seconds. So, I mean, um, that was the only complaint I've, I've received. I don't know about anybody else, but it was just nice to see that it was taken care of and like the parents were happy before it hit Facebook and it was a complaint and it spread like wildfire that it was like a good place to bring the kids. Like, it wasn't a lot of riffraff like there's been in the past, so that was, that was good to see.
And the ice rental, it, how much is that of like out-of-town organizations or even like Canada? I don't know if they come over.
Um, it all goes by age groups too. So our youth residents are now seventy-one-fifty. I believe out of town is ninety-six fifty, eighty-six fifty, and then the adult in town is, it's, there's a lot of different fees. My special parties is seventy-one-fifty.
You're.
We do, yes, we are.
Our fee are broken down by age group and then whether or not you're a resident or non-resident. So they're actually quite complicated, I guess. Have a resident and a non-resident be just to sort of simplify it and not worry about whether it's a youth group or an adult group. So again, um, another.
Another thing for our Recreation Commission to kind of take a look at and give us some feedback on.
These numbers came from, uh, I think it was two years ago from the Rec Commission and I don't think we did anything with it last year because we didn't have anything, so.
But are, but are we getting hockey teams from Canada, Messina, Canton?
Well, we'll, we have in the past and I would anticipate now that Canada has just changed the regulations again, so the molecular COVID test is no longer required. We, we may see that. Um, obviously last year we didn't see that, but that, that was, that was a fluke.
Old timers are over here quite a bit.
Yes. Does the revenue help, does it equal the cost?
There's an ice page. It's um, it's G-ten. So we're, we're getting there.
Yeah, we can keep going.
Uh, we can move on to G-seven if, if everybody's good. I don't want to rush anybody. Like I said, that's, that's kind of the meat and potatoes of recreation are the, are the offerings, like the sports camps, the summer camps, et cetera. The fun, definitely the fun part of recreation, so I don't want to rush everybody, correct? But, and move on.
Yep.
Uh, G-seven, there is not too much here, uh, recreation activities. Uh, salaries, materials and supplies. Materials and supplies is the purchase of soccer nets, um, benches occasionally, things that are in support of recreational activities. Uh.
Andrew, did I miss? I'm sorry. I gotta go back to G-six. I was just thinking, I didn't see swimming on here.
The swimming is, you mean the pool?
For summer programs. I know.
Swim lessons?
Yeah, did I miss it?
It's under the pool.
It's under the pool. Okay. Then I missed it. No, we're not there yet. Okay, okay.
Search page.
Um. This also does have uh, parks and recreation revenue, G-seven does for uh, camps and specifically. The pool is next, if you want to go to the pool. All right, G-eight. So, um, we have made some adjustments to the staffing or we're recommending some changes to the staffing. Uh, but overall increasing the, the rate from twelve-fifty to fifteen dollars for lifeguards, we think that will help. In fact, we've kind of moved everybody to that now, but currently, um, just because we have to be competitive. Um, which then kind of reflects back to the headguards and water safety instructors, et cetera. So that's, that's G-eight. Um, G-nine is the pool budget. Uh, specialized equipment, that's actually, that's uh, we need some new picnic tables in the pool area. It, uh, that twenty-five hundred dollars is for new picnic tables, a new reaching pole and new buoy ropes. Capital construction, um, that is, that's twenty thousand dollars and that's for general pool repairs. There's some cracking uh, in the pools. We have requested estimates so that we would be able to provide those to you, but we didn't receive those back. We still don't have those back. Uh, but we know that there is a need for some general pool maintenance and pool repairs. Um, there's quite a bit of cracking in the toddler pool or infant pool. So that's, that's what that cost is. Are there questions on those two items?
Did you ever get a spare phone? Wasn't there a pump that one up this year or something? That you had to wait and close down the pool?
We had to close down early one day.
Uh, did you ever, do we, do we have a spare one?
Yep.
Does that include any um, repairs to the showers or anything like that? And that's usually pretty bad. Just repair last time I was through there. The showers and the restroom facilities, the locker rooms.
It would come under that budget. I, I guess we didn't talk about that specifically in the budgeting, but it would come under.
That's the only complaints I received out of the pool all year was the condition of the, yeah.
The showers?
Was just the condition of like the showers and the restrooms being like older. Um, and disrepair. I mean, I, the only repair, the only complaint I got all year about the pool.
Showers and washroom.
The, the actual like locker, the, not locker room, but you know, changing facility area there.
Um, materials and supplies, ten thousand dollars. That's for chlorine. And the pool revenue, uh, I believe that that is associated with the swim lesson. Any questions on the pool?
So we also charge a fee, correct?
We do.
Should that be under revenues?
The pool revenues?
Mm-hmm.
That's five hundred dollars?
All right. I thought that was for swim lessons.
Uh, that, that is the swim lessons fee.
Okay.
So I don't know if we should put a revenue on there, or if we just say it's paid that.
Well, here we didn't charge to use the pool.
Oh, we didn't?
No.
No, we didn't have it this year.
So we didn't charge a fee this year? Are we?
Are we charging this coming year?
We did not account for a fee associated for using the pool. That's, so the fee there, five hundred dollars for revenue is associated with the swim lessons. So that's, you can, you can put a revenue in there if you all want to charge.
I think there should be a fee for using the pool. There's been a lot of. There's always been.
Money's, well, not, not five, four or five years.
Yeah.
You know? I'd see, I'd see it again on a hot day being denied.
I don't think we'll deny anybody. We never have.
If you're charging them, they can't get in if they don't have money.
Usually fire department picks it up, the union.
Pepsi done it. Pepsi did it for five years.
Pepsi usually did it.
Great.
Fire department did it before that, the union.
I thought it was eighteen, nineteen, but two or three years Pepsi did it, I think. The, the fire department has, um, I believe, I don't, I'm not going to get it exactly right, but they have, they have done a donation. I don't know if it was like cards or something of that nature that, that they've also done that too. Yeah, in the past. But we didn't charge this year, I guess is my point. Uh, this year there was no fee to swim. Um, so this is a really good discussion and one that needs to be had. It should also apply to the beach, I would say. So there's a separate budget for the beach. So, uh, there's also no fee associated with going to the beach.
So I think there should be minimal. To use it.
I mean, if you're, you're thinking fees wise, you could always do like, um, a one-time user fee and you could use it as much as you want for family. I mean, instead of.
That's always been.
Well, instead of having, I'm just saying if, if a fee is what people are gearing towards, I mean, we have a rec commission. Usually they could guide you as to what other people. So maybe it's something when we get a rec commission, we can look at. But even if we did a fee and you might get donors to donate X amount of cards, so, or donate or whatever. So we can look at that when we get a rec commission, hopefully.
How many people daily use the pool on average, would you say?
Oh, I don't know if you did numbers this year. I know during the day last year, I think she had around seven hundred in the, just in the summertime. But daily, I guess it all depends on the day too.
They get worse.
In the weekend it was a lot.
Thirty to seventy-five.
Yeah. Weekdays was harder with the kids, the parents, but when the parents had the day off, the weekend, they got around seventy or a hundred few days.
I know we leave it out and see if we can, maybe some people donate, upset them. If not, it's not, it's not a lot of money in the whole scheme.
It's not a lot of money. It's just, we've had years where we've argued, I mean, for weeks. Are we going to charge a dollar or a dollar fifty? I mean, literally, you know, let's not do that. I, I mean, for a buck and then, you know, they never deny a kid anyways. It's, come on in, what are you gonna do? Tell him he can't go swim?
Well, if you're gonna set a fee, then that's what we're gonna do.
Fire department, if Pepsi come in and always say, you know, or somebody. One of these organizations. Yeah, it's usually a buck. I mean.
We can, uh, so it's a revenue, um.
Just have the recreation commission look at all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, let's do that.
The arena is G ten. Oh, you're jumping ahead to G eleven. Questions on, uh, G ten with staffing. Just before, I don't want to skip any pages here. Uh, so G eleven is the meat of the recreation budget. Um, and I will really let Shane and Mackenzie speak to this if, if anybody has specific questions.
Yeah, capital construction and equipment maintenance.
Overhead doors, right?
They're in pretty rough shape.
How many doors?
Uh, there's four sets of double doors.
Probably equipment maintenance, that's.
Equipment maintenance, that is.
Holy shit.
Three years. So we got the battery, uh, actually computer system. And they couldn't get parts in, so we rolled the money over for last year and add it to it.
What does the computer system do?
It runs the compressor system, that's refrigerates the ice. The one that's in there now is a personal building. I think everybody didn't use when they got it. It's twenty plus years old. Doesn't have the ability to dial it out for the mission. So we won't find it out.
Until it's melted.
It was on the weekend or it was warm up. We did have that issue this year. So take care of that. It doesn't kick back, not at all, at the time.
Questions on the arena?
So we actually do generate sixty thousand in revenues on the arena through all those rentals?
Yeah.
Wow.
At the end of September, from, uh, January, uh, day, I think we posted, uh, we generated forty-seven five. And we did have a lot of rentals last year and we rolled an extra month.
And Heathley and Powers, the majority of that is the refrigeration system?
Yes.
So it costs about forty thousand dollars to have ice?
Yes.
And is there revenue from the solar on the roof or how's, where's that?
Yes, there is. That does offset.
Is that, is that in the sixty?
No.
That's what we take in just on rentals.
And so you know how much, how, how does that work with the solar?
I know there was an issue this year.
But that offsets the city's, um, like general electrical expense. So it doesn't show up as a divided or separate individualized, um, cost in this budget. Revenue, I should say.
Is it all our own new, is it your metered? I mean, how, how does it? It's, we own them and sell power too.
It offsets our costs here in the city. So we, um, when solar generates power, generates credits that go into our own city's.
Usage.
Any idea what that was for the year?
Well, this year, that, just a couple meetings ago, maybe two meetings ago, this was on your, we discussed this because there was an error. The, with the wifi, they weren't getting the appropriate, uh, information. So it was off. So that's why, I think it was in Angela's last, um, report on the finances. We were down on projected revenue, not because there was an issue with this not being clean or something. And then the wifi wasn't connecting.
I went through the same thing. It was just a odd year. The ice got on there. You don't, I mean, you go up there and try to clean them. That's labor intensive and then you made the image. So I lost a lot of electricity last year. I had to actually pay, you know.
But she did have that number. So we could probably get, pull that.
And I didn't have wifi. Runner doesn't make us, doesn't make us ten thousand dollars a year?
Oh, it's more than that. I can provide that at the next, um, council meeting, the summary of credits that we're seeing.
But is our, our, um, cost for ice time, is it substantially lower than other places?
I think the average in North Carolina is probably nineteen, a hundred dollars an hour. One issue we do have, that the city, there's another that sells ice that is so low that it's not very hot. I've started a conversation with them, I've come up together. But I think to raise our rates, just my personal opinion, I don't think anybody's gonna walk away.
So the only other underneath the school district?
Yeah, they only have so much, you know, there's only so many hours in the day for people to be on it.
Residents at the school, folks, for sure. Their facility shut down. We have, we recognize that. Sometimes it's just not enough place for us to be.
I don't think we should get all crazy and put a burden on anyone, but if we could, you know, um, tighten up that gap between our revenue and our cost some. I think that'd be beneficial because you're gonna come a point, you're gonna have to put money into it and we'll be like, wow, do we need ice rink? And well.
Let me just extend the, the time instead of the time that we open and close it now as far as the time of year. Kick it on each end, give it, you know, because if people like skating.
Mackenzie and Shane have done some research to recommend new rates for twenty twenty-two for the arena.
I have one question. Um, I know if we're going to be doing the outdoor rink this year and we're still be sustaining the rink here. Are there any grants we can look into for skates? Cause I know like when you go to a racket skate or you go to open skating, those skates are gone quickly if you're not there within the first twenty minutes before the opener. Are there any way to look for some, any type of funding to look towards getting some more of that equipment? I, I don't know.
I'm sure there are.
I don't know. It's like, if it's anything Mackenzie can look into, just because I think, um, if we're going to like, I know with the pickleball, you can go to the Dubisky and you could pick up the pickleball. Um, I think that if we're gonna have the rink, a lot of people don't necessarily have skates and that is expensive. So is there, are we going to offer something like that when people wanted to take their family skating? They could pick up the skates and then go to the outdoor rink. So I think that's an issue that we kind of need to look at too.
We have talked about that and I don't think that that is what we would plan on doing, at least in year one.
Okay.
Um, so the outdoor rink, you would really have to have your own skates. At least that's what we were thinking this year. Um, we did talk about that and how some people don't have skates or would rent the skates. So that's something that will, you know, if we are fortunate with the weather and we're able to execute that, um, that's something that we'll have to look at. Budgeting for acquisition or getting grants for during the year, but we would have to get additional skates and then find a way to keep them on, on site. So that isn't part of the plan for this year. Um, but, um, yeah, so I would say in the past, the Queen Lawrence County Health Initiative has had grants that funded those types of things. Yep, exactly. They've done snowshoes, skates and cross-country skis. So I don't know what they have available at this time, um, but certainly that's something that we can look into.
Thank you.
We really should be starting considering a capital fund, uh, at some point, we can be some big money put in, have to be put in.
We have a grant for, for engineering to redesign that arena, correct?
No, it was included in, um, I, I think the city's very first DRI application. Um, you know, talking about how that facility has the opportunity to become more of a destination, but it needs some, um.
Major work.
Right. Additions.
So we didn't get that grant?
No, we didn't get the DRI in twenty seventeen.
But I think we applied for another one, right? So we did.
We may have put in, I think we did put in a separate CFA, but that wasn't awarded.
Yeah, I think that's something to consider is, um, just raising the rates and even if we want to just use it to start a capital fund at some point. It's gonna be a big hit. We don't want to be in the financial situation where we lose that, you know?
Or you could write a, a grant for Parks and Recreation. Like if, if there was a need, you'd, you'd have an engineer drop some estimates and you could write a grant to Parks and Recreation, right? For a capital project. That's generally what they.
And we did, and we did that, um, before. We could do it again. It wasn't funded the, the first time, but yes, certainly.
How many days does the arena operate? Do you know?
A week.
No, like for the whole season, if you start.
Start October first, we can put that down usually mid-March because we have to, they summer the seasons, stay put out.
So it's about six months?
About six months.
So it costs the city seventy grand for six months. And the pool costs the city eighty grand for forty-four days. Okay. Just wondering, because we had a conversation about rates. And some people don't want to raise rates on one item, but do want to close the gap on the other. So I'm just clarifying. All right.
I think people that are, you know, into the hockey.
They got the.
They got more money, they have more money than little kids.
G twelve is a new page. Um, this is the beach. So, uh, we are budgeting for this, uh, under the expectation that we will be able to offer the beach in twenty twenty-two. We made really good progress as the city manager has kept you updated on, uh, throughout twenty twenty-one. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get it open, but, uh, we feel confident that we will be able to collect the samples over a longer period of time. Uh, under more regular conditions and we would be able to open the beach in twenty twenty-two. Uh, this budget presented to you offers the beach four days a week, Monday through, or sorry, Friday through Monday from noon to six. Uh, we would have four lifeguards and one headguard. Um, so that's essentially what you have in the salary line. Specialized equipment is the acquisition or purchase of an, uh, an AED. The thirty thousand dollars is to address handicap accessibility. We will need to purchase a cell phone that's dedicated to staff at the beach, which is the five hundred dollars there. Uh, eight thousand dollars is for materials and supplies that's associated with buoys and sand. Um, and then three thousand dollars is the, uh, projected lease with the Bridge and Port Authority, which is comparable to what we had, uh, secured for twenty twenty-one. So that is, uh, at four days, it's, it's four days for twelve weeks at a cost of seventy-three thousand sixty-six dollars.
And, um, is, is the idea is to utilize the lifeguards that are at the pool? And so the pool, the pool would be closed if the beach was open?
We were, we have had overlap on Fridays.
One day it would, they'd both be open?
Correct.
Otherwise you're using the same resources, but we're not counting them twice.
Correct. This is just, this just reflects, um, the labor associated with the beach.
So this would mean there'd be some type of swimming offered every day of the week. So the pool would not be closed on Mondays or it would be?
The pool would be closed, um, when, on, on the weekend and the beach would be open. There would be one day of overlap, which would be Friday.
So we would have swimming every day of the week?
Correct.
Could we do a, um, a course maybe for lifeguards during the winter? If like the kids out at school that are interested, that are just coming up to that level and start maybe getting our own, you know, seeding our own crop. So that we don't run into like, when you get to the summertime, like, oh, there's a shortage everywhere at lifeguards. You know, prepare for it in the winter, wait for the summer. And because of, a lot of these kids, if they know they're pretty well gonna have a job, they're liable to jump in. And, and even your water safety and start your, your, you know, your swimming lessons. Um, like that person on the, one of those back pages only makes fifteen dollars an hour to where your head lifeguard was making sixty. I think that person should actually get paid more, only because that's, it takes more to be the water safety instructor than it does to be the head lifeguard.
It's very expensive to become a lifeguard.
It's expensive to become a water safety.
In water and safety. I mean, I think it was, they just advertised it not too long ago, I saw, and it was over three hundred dollars just to take the course.
ATC.
And that didn't include like your extra things on it. I mean, that's, yeah, yeah, that's, I mean.
No, F A does it as well, I think. Through, through the, uh, through the district, right?
We had a lot of that.
Yeah, because it just seems like every time, like this year, we got to the point where the, we talked about lifeguards and then it was like, oh my God, you know, we, I don't know if we got lifeguards. I think part of the problem also was, uh, not so much the retention improvement, but it was, uh, because of COVID, we didn't actually have the certificate for training, correct?
Yeah, that was part of it.
Renewable, I don't know if it's annual or.
Yes.
It's annually? The CPR first statement, it is annually.
Right, right. Okay, all right. So it was a shortage and, and a training issue. Okay.
Is, is the defibrillator portable?
Yes.
It's not the kind of thing you'd bring back and forth and save $30,000.
It's a $3,000 expense.
By law, I think you have to have it on site.
The 30,000 is to ensure that we're addressing the handicap accessibility. That, I think that's.
Really?
Yeah.
What does that go for?
It's, that's really putting in place a plan to provide it for 2022 and also the engineering that's necessary to make sure that we can make the long-term improvements. If that's what we're going to do long-term.
State, state raises it.
Not, it's crucial to make sure that it's.
I believe it's required under federal law, under equal accessibility.
Counselor Kennedy has asked about it on a number of occasions. And I think, um, excuse me, it's, it'll be worth us, you know, hiring the firm to, to determine what, what our, you know, what our options are. I, I, it's, it's a, it's a challenging site because of the slope. But I, but I think there's also probably some solutions, but I think, uh, well, a good bulk of that money will ultimately go towards, you know, hire an engineer firm to provide us some courses of action. Deluxe bare bones or, and or something in between, something like that. But I think if we, if we're able to open it, we've got to, we, we have to address it. The state hasn't, uh, pushed us on it at the moment, but, but, but.
What aspect of the marina are you thinking is not?
The marina itself.
I, I personally witnessed individuals, um, in wheelchairs accessing their boats in the marina.
I'm just wondering.
I mean.
I believe that the, the ramps and the grades, anything, it's 7% is the.
Maple City Trail is. So if you come off the Lafayette Street Bridge, you take a left, that hill that goes down, that's, that's handicap, that meets all the requirements.
Are we talking about the marina or the trail? The trail itself is handicap accessible. Are you talking about a road?
Well, when you walk the trail, no, you walk over the Lafayette Street Bridge.
You can walk over Lafayette Street Bridge.
That's the Maple City Trail. It connects over the Lafayette Street Bridge. So you have a hill that goes up and then you have a hill that goes down.
That street does not have a sidewalk. So if we did put a sidewalk there, we would need to look at the grade and ensure that it was accessible. Presently, there is no sidewalk there.
The trail doesn't have to.
I think that on a map, we might show it as a trail, but again, there's no sidewalk on that portion of the street that you're referring to that has steep grade. So the street is not subject to handicap accessibility. A sidewalk would be.
The trail isn't.
The trail is not there. The trail is below, which is also accessible via the Maple City Trail pedestrian bridge and then Lake Street with no, with no great change. You just have to take a different route, but it is equally accessible to those with disabilities.
The marina does.
And so I think, I, I, I think it's impossible for us, Counselor Reese, if we open the beach, it's it's impossible for us not to, to explore the possibilities of how we do it. It's, it's, it's a challenging site that you, you, you necessarily have at other places where the, the terrain isn't, isn't what it is. So I think, I mean, I, I, I think we have a responsibility to at least explore the possibilities of how we, you know, how we do it. Uh, like I said, I think there are some, there's some ways after walking the ground a couple of times, I, I think there are some things that could be done, especially as you use the long slope of the terrain to get down there. But I think, um, again, I, I think we've got to study what the options are and bring those to council. How, how we can help facilitate. I, I don't think that we, I mean, I think if what you're getting at is, is a significant project, if we were to provide absolute, you know, ADA compliant accessibility, I think what we're talking about now is how we, how we apply some reasonable accessibility to, to the site. It's, it's a public site. I mean, I don't want to claim expertise in this, but somebody challenged us. It's a public site using public dollars. We've got to, we've got to make our best effort to, 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 to do what we can do within reason.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's applying to all of our facilities and stuff.
Okay. Gotcha. Moving on.
That is the recreation budget. Uh, so before we move on to, uh, different division, uh, are there any outstanding questions for Mackenzie or Shane on recreation? Or myself?
As Andrea said, I think, uh, we'll have a comprehensive, uh, list of names that I'll get sent out soon, uh, before they hit the agenda for all of council to see. We've had, um, significant interest in it, which is, is encouraging. And I think as we've all talked previously, it's the most effective way to make sure that we are getting the diverse amount of opinions to, to council on any, uh, topic involving recreation. I think as we've seen this year, uh, recreation in our city is hitting all, all age groups and all, uh, demographics. So I think we're going to do our best to bring you names that will represent that. I think that'll go the, the longest way. Um, I, I think, I want to just say, I think Mackenzie's made great strides in in solidifying and showing up our relationships with people that are doing, uh, doing the programs. And that largely has been, uh, my direction to Andrea and Mackenzie is make sure that the city is, um, is far forward leaning as we can with supporting those people that are doing programs. I would like to have the city responsible for as few programs as possible, only so that we can contribute in the most significant way to the things that are most, uh, difficult for the volunteers to do. So we'll be looking, even there should do expand what we're doing logistically, facility-wise, et cetera, for the Qantas as it becomes more difficult, uh, for them to, to get and maintain people to do the programs. I want to try to avoid the, their volunteers being tasked or hamstrung with having to paint the dugouts and, you know, provide, you know, project work. We need to make sure that the effort people are donating from my perspective is, is going directly towards the, towards the programs and find a way, uh, to handle the logistics and the facility maintenance and things like that for them. I think that's probably the greatest contribution we make. And then those programs that we have to administer. Uh, we do, and I, again, I think we had good, uh, good success this year and hopefully our COVID pandemic situation allow us to, to keep moving forward with, uh, with programs. So, um, Mackenzie, great, great job in your first year, uh, big task, uh, in the pandemic. And especially after programs have been largely shut down for a year. So great job.
So we'll move to assessments, which is C8.
There goes your backup, Andrew.
I know. As we move to the non-fun topics, I lose all my support. Uh, so C8 is assessments, that salaries, you'll see, uh, the, the one position there is our assessor. Uh, that is presently Mark Schnorr. Uh, and then C9 is the bulk of the assessment budget. So this budget is largely unchanged from last year with the, with one exception. Assessments are something I feel like in the past, we haven't talked a whole lot about, but they have been talked about, uh, much more as of late, and I think that's really important. And so this year you'll see that we have budgeted for a citywide reevaluation at a cost of $275,000. This, um, is in our professional recommendation, the only way to ensure that we adequately adjust for and account for the pretty significant market change that we've experienced over the last 18 months. Um, and ensure that everybody is on la- level playing field and no one neighborhood, um, or one block is disproportionately impacted by an increase in in assessment due to a sale of their property or a neighboring property. So I ask the council to seriously consider supporting the request for $275,000 in the consultant line of this budget. Uh, again, to ensure that we are prepared to reflect the market changes that we have experienced. I think that this is, is, is really an opportunity and it will help us have a better informed budget in the next several years going forward. Uh, so that we can adjust our sales tax, uh, or not our sales tax, our property tax accordingly also.
Yeah, with that, with that kind of money, we'd go out to bid. We're not, we're not just.
So we have gone up to bid. We did an RFP this fall. We got two responses, um, and this price here reflects the cost from Gar Associates.
Can we get a list of all the companies that bid then?
There were two and we can get you both of the proposals. Absolutely.
Was there any FRB money for that or no?
So with the procurement.
I don't believe so, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, let's be jumping. It's like, uh, there's a, so Counsel, I apologize. We already went over the sheet because I was flipping through sheets too fast on the very first budget session, but I'm glad that Andrea's reread it from, uh, her perspective. I, I forgot to tell you, I, I just accidentally did. I just slipped the pages and kept going, but.
Take over my budgets.
No, it's all right. We'll kind of stop, but, um, so quickly to Counselor Kennedy's, uh, question. The answer is yes, and I don't know, but I'm, but I'm going to work on it because I do think, uh, we were, we were going through the FRB report again the other day, Angela and I looking for uh, other, other things that we could tie in as initiatives. And I'm, and I'm wondering perhaps if we submit this time that we could get their attention.
Remember something when we went over it and they did like a talk with us.
Yeah.
It was like three years ago we went over it, but I vaguely remember something. I can't quote it, but I remember.
I'm going to submit it as an initiative because it's, it's a significant expense to what you'd normally see, but, uh, I think, uh, we're, we were brainstorming that just the other day. There's two or three other areas we're trying to figure out. How can we, uh, use, use their system? We don't have a grant from it, but it's in the report. So it allows us, uh, to be able to apply for a grant. So I think.
I remember that was one of the things that was listed as.
Yeah. And, and unlike other grant opportunities, the FRB is okay if we spent our money and did it and we're asking for, for assistance. So, so definitely going to do that.
Okay.
So the only other line I wanted to draw to your attention, although if you've already got through it.
I just have a question on the bids. So the RFP meets our procurement policy.
Yes.
It's not really the same as a bid, right?
It's a professional service? So we do have specific language in our, for procurement, but, um,
To do an RFP?
I don't know that it specifically references RFP, but yes. That's typically how we would, how we do, um, ensure that we're getting competitive costs is for, for a professional service is to put it out for an RFP or sometimes we use the request for qualifications, uh, which is then followed by a request for, um, proposals.
Okay, I've always like, I understand hiring lawyers and, you know, accountants and things like that. As a professional service, I've never, like a real estate appraiser or assessor. I've never seen that in it, but.
That's fine, as long as you think we're getting the best deal.
You know, I mean, uh, so depending on a certain threshold, certain personal services, we just, um, we can just hire who we want to. There isn't, the city procurement policy allows us to do that. This because the dollar threshold needed to be competed.
But also because we wanted to ensure that we were getting
Yeah.
someone that was qualified, um, a group that was qualified and that would, had the capacity to complete it in a reasonable timeframe.
Yeah.
Because this is a, a heavy lift. It isn't something that we would be able to do in-house.
Where are they at?
Syracuse.
One Syracuse and one's Rochester, striking.
Have they done it before?
Well.
They have. Yep.
Other communities have utilized?
Yeah, we'll send you the whole packages. Both had extensive submittals.
I thought this was like something very unique. I've never heard of it before. Some of the, uh, other communities in New York State have done it before.
Yeah, I, and I suspect what a lot of communities do is they hire people and perhaps just they maybe they section the neighborhoods instead of, again, having their one uh, assessor, you know, being caught up for an entire period of time doing it. They just, they hire it. You can set parameters that, you know, guarantees consistency, you know, timeliness, et cetera. So, uh, but we'll, um, we'll send you both packages. Again, we're, we, we did the RFP. Excuse me, sort of as a, trying to figure out what, what kind of money we should be budgeting for. So it's sort of cart ahead of the horse, but so we're asking you for the money. In theory, we'd have got this and we'd have gone and done an RFP, um, but we'll, we'll send you the packages. Um, you know, as we're going forward, so you can, as, as we would do anything else, you'd have to approve. It's a substantial contract. You'd have to approve the contract. So you'll get to see all the bid packages.
But is it, this price is based off of a proposal from Gar Associates?
Yeah.
Uh, the only other line item that I was going to draw your attention to is the consultant line, uh, point 505, which is $13,000 and those are fees that are paid to St. Lawrence County, uh, to assist the assessment office in, in the filing and updating of property transfers primarily. If there are no other questions on assessments, we can move to engineering. Engineering starts on C14. So there's one salary in this line, which is the technical specialist position at $55,067. Uh, and then the, the departmental costs are on C15. There's really no change in this budget, uh, from previous years with the exception of, um, the consultant line, which is the line that pays for the, all of the city's general engineering costs that are not directly associated with a capital project or a grant project. Those typically range, as you can see, in the 18 to $20,000 range. So this year it is being presented to you at a slightly lower amount, but we are making a, a great effort to minimize general engineering costs that are not specifically tied to a capital project or a grant project. So, um, it's, it's slightly lower at 15,000, but I really would not recommend, uh, lowering that anymore because you can see historically it's not.
Who is this?
Well, it, it's typically Tisdale, although it can be any engineer depending on what we need the engineering for. So sometimes if it's, if we have, it, it's for engineering that we didn't necessarily plan on. So for those reasons, it's typically, it's typically Tisdale. Uh, but sometimes we do, we do contract it out. We did, we've used this line this year when we did hazardous building materials assessment at 30 Main Street. We retained Lobella for that and that those were procured through the RFP process. So it can, it can vary.
Just I see that it's, we're paying state retirement and stuff.
Oh, that's associated with the technical specialist position, not the consultant line.
That's, oh, right. So who's the technical specialist?
Jennifer Ashley.
Who is it?
Jennifer Ashley.
Oh, okay.
Jennifer Ashley.
Correct.
Upstairs?
Yes.
Used to be upstairs.
So uh, we all know how, how much Ford Street needs to be redone. Somewhere a project to like patch. With the trillion dollars coming out, would it, would it pay us to start engineering work?
We have put that in the capital, uh, plan. Anything over $10,000 like that has been included in the capital plan. Capital plan.
I'm just thinking, you know, if you have, uh, you know, engineering done or some other part, you know, a star on things, does it help you?
Shovel ready.
Shovel ready. Remember that, that last trillion was, all that ready stuff was ready.
Shovel ready.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
Yes, yes. The answer is yes, though. That is true. If you have those, if you have a project engineered and, you know, shovel ready, it does make you more competitive for grants, federal and state grants, any grant. Uh, but that type of a project is, uh, I mean, I don't know how much that would cost, uh, but I would guesstimate that the engineering alone for the preliminary engineering for Ford Street would probably be a six-figure number.
Was it part of our CFA?
We did not specifically ask. We asked for preliminary engineering funding, $52,000 for East David Street.
Uh, then we are in good shape because we have all the engineering done for our Lafayette Street Bridge.
Yes.
You know, maybe that. You know.
Shovel ready.
Yeah.
But she, is she your secretary?
No.
As well?
No.
She pretty much makes sure that our great compliance and that is, it's a very important job what she does.
She's independent and does.
She, she, she works, so, so she's the, I guess, call it the last bastion in the engineering department, but she works under, under Andrea's direction. I, uh, you know, I, I, I think, I think we've talked about this before. I, I described Jennifer Ashley with all due respect as the littlest known employee in the city who probably has, uh, the most work on any given day. All grants, technical specifications, uh, helping process, you know, the performance payments, not necessarily the writing the check, but did you do the work? Did you match up the documents? Uh, bidding, uh, documents. Uh, bidding, uh, documents and proposals. I mean, I, I, all, all the things that I think you would associate with. With what an engineering department would do, other than the actual engineering work itself. I mean, she facilitates everything else uh, for us. Again, I, you have to spend a, you have to spend a day up there with her, uh, maybe a little bit more than a day. To under, understand that, because, uh, and again, I say this with all respect, no, nothing she does is ever really seen by, by anybody. It, it just isn't, but everything she does. Is, is really, quite frankly, the framework that holds everything up that we, that we do all see. I. She, I, I sort of liken her to the ladies in the comptroller's office. There's some things in there I can show you that they do, but at the end of the day, the rest of it, it's all, all framework. Um, I'm, I'm always. I, I, so just for instance, you know, a, a grant comes in from a contractor, the subcontractor for this contract in the wastewater plant. There's always about, it seems to me like three hundred documents that go along with writing one check, and I always wonder who's, who's keeping track of all that, who's. Who's tracking the performance? Who knows that we're supposed to be doing this point, that point, getting this permit? And the answer is, it's, it's always Jennifer Ashley. For the longest time, she's been managing. And corralling all the grants uh, with the comptroller's office. I'm shifting a little bit of the. The monetary part uh, back to the comptroller's office, uh, because the work in the planning. Uh, engineering, you know, area is, is increasing as, as the number of projects we're taking on increases. And uh, you know, if you looked at our DRI application, one of the things that. You should recognize is we're getting ready to get busy uh, in the city, whether we're awarded. The additional money or not, there are people that are getting ready to be advancing significant projects. We are advancing. Uh, significant projects, and there's just a lot of administration to keep those going. These grants, and I, I know this might sound like a broken record, but these grants are, are. Well, they're just painful. They're painful to get, they're painful to administer, uh, and they're painful to get the money out of them. When I say painful, it's just, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of process to uh, to go through it, so I. Again, I, it's one of those positions, I don't know this, I'm doing it justice right now. If Andrea wants to jump in, I, I, I often tell. The mayor and I've talked about this before, it's really a position you need to go spend a little time with, and then you realize quickly, uh, that's, it's one of those positions behind the door that if we.
She's the new Pat Pegg.
She's what?
Well, she did take over for Pat Pegg.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she ensures that we're complying with prevailing wage, Davis Bacon wage rates, MWBE requirements. She's always reviewing the certified payrolls from all the contractors. Preparing all of the bid documents, taking care of the bid bonds. Um.
I'm hard to believe there's someone that can fill Pat Pegg's shoes.
Oh, Jennifer does a great job.
I wouldn't like that job.
But, but Pat, Pat Peggwin always was like half planning and half engineering. She, she worked.
Yeah.
Shared secretary.
And at a, actually, when I started working for the city in two thousand and eleven, I came along, it was myself and John Buckwalt at the time, and so. He and I took on, I think, most of the planning duties that Pat had been doing. Um, as well as some of the zoning related things that, that Cindy Geis had been doing, and those, those items never. Got shuffled back to anybody, so those all are taking place now in the planning office. Um, but. But Jennifer has also taken on a lot of other and new duties that just weren't there before. Um, but I actually have a memo, because nobody ever knows what Jennifer does, so I, I'm happy to pull that out and update it and get it out to y'all.
Good.
Um, if there are no questions on engineering. Or discussion, we can go to planning, which is C twenty-one. So C twenty-one is salaries. We'll see that there is the director. And a, um, another planner, which we did budget for last year, where we were not able to execute that, unfortunately, it wasn't for lack of effort. But we were successful in getting some of the other positions filled, and we felt like those were, were more important to ensuring that. Other departments uh, were able to function more efficiently, so it is our goal to. Focus on this in early twenty twenty-two uh, and procure that second planning position. Um, so you'll see that there are those two positions in the salaries. Are there questions on salaries? Discussion?
Why do we need a planner versus a business developer or whatever?
I'm not really sure that they are different. I think that most people with a planning background come from economic development. Um, sort of that business side of things, so that's definitely something that we would be looking at, including. As a skill set in this person that we would be hiring, for sure.
Sounds good.
So in the planning budget, much the same as you uh, probably would have noticed in years past. Um, again, we are moving, so there is a little bit of uh, some office equipment and furniture that needs to be acquired to facilitate that move. Uh, to the first floor. Um, professional training, we are required by state law to pay for training for all of our planning and zor, uh, zoning board members. They are required by law to obtain no less than four hours of training each year and five hours for new members. This year, um, like, training kind of across the board, and maybe some of you have experienced it in, in your professional lives. Um, with the lack of conferences and in-person things, most things have gone remote and they were offered free of charge, so we were lucky that we saved on professional training in twenty twenty-one and. And also in twenty twenty. Uh, those fees are starting to creep back in, and also people are starting to convene in person again, so we do have to account for that. Uh, and that's primarily what is in that professional training line. Consultants is, is um, is the biggest line other than salaries in the planning budget. Uh, this year it's increased to sixty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. This is uh, funding that is used to support grant applications, technical assistance required for. For grant applications like that, for our brownfield grants, engineering that we may have to pay for. Um, sometimes this also includes. Studies and analysis that we, we do again in conjunction with. Grant applications and or execution or implementation of grants, uh, and also some of our matching funds, so. We have been working to slowly increase that line over time, because oftentimes we need. Matching funds and, and that has been the line for that. Uh, and, and again, just the assistance for, for grant applications.
So twenty-one, it was forty-five thousand, but we, to date, it's only, only spent fifteen hundred?
That's really not accurate. Uh, that, it's just, it's just an accounting thing. It, it's, it's an accounting thing, because this funding matches our, our Boa grant, so I say, I say that that's not true or accurate, because. You all know that we have brought you products from Vita Nova, um, the marketing of the diamond site specifically, that has all been under the brown, this uh. Brownfield CFA grant for which that funding is the match for, so we have been drawing that down. We have, uh, it's just that that money needs to be transferred into the capital account for that project, and. That will happen when the comptroller's office sees fit to, to make that transition.
And, and some of that could be used to. You know, hire someone to write a community development block.
Yes.
Or hire someone to write, like, ten applications.
Absolutely, counselor.
Well, I hope it gets spent, because it generally can generate millions of dollars and revenue.
The sixty-five thousand for twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll work very hard to spend that down. Uh, okay, so. Code enforcement.
So revenues, Andrea, we don't.
If we can back up a minute just a second, uh, because I don't want anybody to think that we're, we're putting money in here, we're looking for things to do. Don't. Make no mistake about it, with the things that we're getting ready to embark upon in the coming year, at the least of which is the Augsbury property, we will be. We will be here often asking for, for funds that we can't get from somebody else to do a little bit of this or a little bit of that, or, or something. Uh, the number of houses that are, that are probably gonna become city property that we'll have to immediately figure out a. Tear down, modify, safety, whatever. I mean, there's all, all these, it doesn't matter what it is, a, a study that has to happen, a phase one that pops up we need to do, there's. We're just trying to, to get some money in a line item that we know, that we, we pull from, so I don't have to. To come and ask you for different money or to pull money from, from somewhere else. Um, there, there's a. There's just a lot of things going on that will, that will draw. This sixty-five thousand, my prediction is will be about. A third of what we'll, we'll end up needing before it's uh, you know, before the, the year's over, at the rate we're going, and, and it'll be a good thing, because it's. It'll, it'll mean projects, but if, we spoke last meeting about, for instance, the uh. Uh, the property adjacent to the uh, to the four, the little pieces, Jackson Street, little Jackson Street property, I mean, we, you know, we'll get into three, four, or five thousand bucks probably. To get a phase one done, and if we move towards a phase two, twenty or thirty or forty thousand dollars, I mean, it, this, that's where stuff like this goes quickly, it doesn't, doesn't take long.
So on the revenue side of things, uh. You know, we don't list uh, grants or. Anything like that, because obviously.
So it, the zombie grant is a good example of a grant that did actually and does presently, although it offsets code enforcement staff. Um, specifically allow for salaries. Um, most grants really do not. They may allow it as part of your in-kind contribution, but they don't allow it as an expenditure. In the grant budget. I do know that in years past, that was an allowable expense, however, that has changed. Almost across the board with very few exceptions. Um, so no, we don't have that booked, we don't have any grants at this time. That have, um, other than the zombie grant. Um.
Well, I think it'd be, you know, I, I don't know. I guess you can't show it as a revenue, but the mere fact that you're bringing. Funds in with a successfully written grant should be reflected somewhere. Is what I'm trying to say. And community development block grant, you know, when we're successful at one of those. I, I never understood the argument, but there's still program delivery administration.
Correct.
And, and that can be significant where it can pay for salaries.
CDBG grants uh, are one of the few grants that does still allow for program delivery, which is typically the engineering. Uh, architecture fees associated with, with constructing the project, whatever that is, whether it's a housing project. You're replacing someone's roof or whatever it is, um, or an infrastructure project where you're doing a repair to a pump station. The program delivery is typically architecture and engineering fee associated with an outside source, unless you have someone in-house that does that. Uh, and there are administrative fees as well. They are directly attributable to the time spent. Administering that grant, so ensuring that you have done the quarterly reports, um, that you.
Pay for part of your salary.
Yes, yes.
The proposed plan or salary.
Yes, that is correct. And in the years where we have gotten them, we do use that, uh, and that all kind of, it gets bundled into. The grant, uh, but it has never been. Uh, to your point, reflected in the revenue section.
And how healthy is the growth fund? Dollar wise?
They're healthy.
So why wouldn't they be providing revenue if you're the person for doing the administration?
Because I no longer do any of their work during business hours.
Oh, how about land bank?
The land bank, uh, I do often, their meetings are um, once a month, and they are at eight-thirty in the morning, so they are during city time. That is counted uh, in their funding as an in-kind, not an in-kind, as a contribution from their foreclosing governmental unit. Um, so the time that, my time as well as time in the comptroller's office preparing checks and things for the land bank, um, are. The city kind of gets credit for that, but not in the, not in the monetary sense.
They can't, is there a restriction against it, or can you get a portion of those funds that you receive, which a couple of them were. Fairly significant, I mean, can you not use it for that?
No, it could be used for that, um, but the land bank itself didn't, doesn't receive any cash contribution from. The foreclosing governmental unit. I think we may be the only land bank in New York State that doesn't. Um, so that is the way that the city reflects a contribution. Um.
Now, but if the state gives you an eight-hundred thousand dollar grant, is any of that allowed for implementation or administration?
Yeah, so it, actually, in this uh, quarter, quarter four, the quarter we're in right now. Um, there's a number of projects that are going on in the, in the land bank, and there is uh, there is funding that the land bank has in our budget to offset additional costs. For staff, um, in this quarter, so yes, there is, there's eight thousand dollars in quarter four that will be coming to the land bank. Um, to offset costs from the comptroller's office and the planning office.
So that really should be reflected as a revenue.
They probably don't even know about it.
I'm also sort of pretending to ignore it, because I don't, because I don't have time to give her away to the land bank.
Well, the reason that that, they're, they're, they're used to be.
I mean, you know, we can, we can put different hats on, they're, they're, they're different entities, but they're all part of the city, you know? Aren't they? Didn't we create them? Aren't they, aren't they serving a function, uh, you know?
You, you know what, I, I, we all, probably all may have different opinions on that. They all start out that way, but, but I assure you, we have little. To no authority or control over what either one of them do at any given time. I suppose we don't give the land bank land or something, but at the end of the day, no, and, and again, I'm not, we're both extremely. Contributory organizations, etcetera, I'm just, uh, we, the city has a lot going on, and I'm sure, I'm sure the idea of. Of, of splitting Andrea's time up seemed like a great idea when it started. I just, again, I'm, I'll be protecting. The organization I'm ultimately responsible for first, so it's nice to say we're taking in revenue. I just, uh. She does these things, I don't know, I think she works a twenty-hour day, probably, ten or twelve for us, and three or four for each of them every day, and somehow does the rest of her stuff, so it's.
Grateful for those hours.
Yeah, it's all. But no, but, but in general, John, no, they're not, and, and we definitely shouldn't look at it that way. They're not, they're not entities.
And shouldn't they have their own staff or something like that?
Well, I think, again, they're both, they're both rather new in, in the grand scheme of things, so I think as they, I, I think that is probably an ultimate goal that they, they always all work towards, um, and again, I think it's. I think it's, it's a, it's kind of a handoff that, that will go on, and I think Andrea. Andrea provides a big, a big part of the, part of the support, and I, at this juncture, we, we trust her to tell us when she's, she's got it, got enough, but I, I think as the organizations grow. Um, it, it will move in that direction. I think that was always the plan, at some point. It was, I, I, Tim was their, Tim was doing their.
How would you feel about the, the new planner that gets hired, that being part of their job description? To generate revenue, to help pay for the position, but, you know, to also.
Well, I.
I mean, if you're gonna be engaged in business development, things like that, those are the resources that you need.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just give an example. We've just recently given the land bank in the last year a lot of properties, and they have a lot of projects going on. And they, you know, as we've discussed about our projects, projects take time to manage it. It's fine to say, oh, we hired an engineer for him to do this or that, but at the end of the day, some governmental entity. Whoever's sponsoring the project has gotta, has gotta be providing oversight to it, so the land bank is at a point right now. Where I just see there's, there's a lot going on, there's gotta be a lot of eyes and ears on the, on the ground, and so then it becomes competing. I mean, for instance, Andrea just gave you a quick walk around with the land bank's going, got going on now, there's a house being constructed as we, as we speak. So it's a, it's a project, some, somebody too. Someone's gotta watch those things, pay attention, administer, make sure people are getting paid, etcetera, so. It's not that, I don't, I don't think these are good ideas, I'm just saying, just in general, it's, we're, we're a city on the move, which is a good thing, and as these things grow. Um, that, that's why staffs will grow, so part of the reason, you know, that. If you look at what we're doing with Andrea now, she's really not any longer, just, I don't know if she ever was just doing city planning, but, but. Being the city planner is not exactly her, her, her majority focus right now. She's now supervising. You know, four completely separate insignificant components, which is in most places a job all by itself, much less being a practitioner. At, at the same time while you're, while you're doing it, and uh. Well, from my perspective, hosting or, or, or growing along to uh, quasi municipal organizations, the Augsburg Growth Fund and the Augsburg Land Bank. So we've, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of hats and a lot of labor on, on Andrea, so hence. Again, asking for a position to get in there to, to take some of that practitioner work. Uh, off, off of Andrea, and I don't even want to say even off, because about the time we get this person hired, the workload will have increased. Um, I mean, just with the things we have going on now. I think we've talked before, we, we strike this DRI grant, or any, how if we, if we strike the grants that she's applied through, through the CFA. There's a significant amount of work coming. We strike this DRA grant, I'll be back to you. One position won't be enough. I mean, we've, it, it's a good thing. This is what, I want, you want to hire people.
Hire a consultant, I mean, Potstown didn't like hire more people, and Watertown did implement the DRI.
Yeah, neither one of them done a great job implementing the DRI. We'll be better than them. They're both doing a crappy job of uh, execution, in my opinion. Bar Town's still fumbling around trying to figure out how to put the money, so. I'm, I'm just saying, we, we, we don't have anyone doing it now, it's, it's.
Do we have somebody in mind for this job yet?
Which, no, no.
Not due to lack of members.
Yeah.
And like.
We're still working through civil service to get them to kind of.
And the growth fund was, you know, created by the city and its repayments from, I don't know. And the growth fund was, you know, created by the city and its repayments from, I don't know if it's still, the, the mall. There used to be old U-Dag monies or something and, uh, you know, I mean, they don't do much, I mean, there, there's not a lot of loans there and everybody's got a loan fund, I mean, could, could some of that money somehow come over here, I mean, you know, which, it, it, just something to think about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't know how, how healthy, when I say healthy, I mean, is there two hundred thousand in the fund, is there a million?
Uh, they have, I didn't know, I was going to give you a report on the growth funds and otherwise I would have told you, but they have north of seven hundred thousand available for lending. Uh, they were formed by the city in April of eight, nineteen eighty-three. And they do focus on, uh, small business lending. I would not say that they don't do anything, they gave out a series of, uh, zero interest loans for COVID relief and starting in March of twenty-twenty, the first loan was made in April, so they jumped on that pretty quickly. Um, and, uh, we receive payments on a regular basis from, um, our active, uh, loans, list of loans.
And we gave an annual report, we, we probably ought to, we probably ought to increase that to twice a year so that it doesn't fall off your radar. I mean, the land bank gave a report too, doesn't anybody really remember what they told us? I'll be honest, I really don't, and I talk to Andrea almost every day about something in there, there's, but, but there's a lot going on, is my point.
The land bank is required by law to give a report to the foreclosing governmental unit, which in this case is you, every March.
And we got that, but it, but again, there's a low, so it, we probably need to increase that frequency so you, so you know, there, neither one of them are stagnant organizations, it's, there's, there's a lot going on. Now, like with everything else governmental, I mean, it, nothing they get to do works at warp speed. I mean, I, Andrea's frustrations on a daily basis are, we climb over a mountain and we're sailing hard and then boom, the next brick wall shows up and we're, you know, we're, we're having to, to put our shoes back on and figure out how to climb the wall, so it's, it's, it's governmental stuff. I think one of the biggest challenges she's bumped into recently is on these resales. You know, uh, there's, there's some covenants caveats that when people, you know, get these, you know, really intended to be really good incentive and, um, um, good incentive buy programs, but there's some conditions with that and the, the idea is you're, you know, you, you're taking that on and and you're being assisted in moving through, it's not intended to be a profit-making deal, so you've got to sign up to, you know, living within the terms and selling within the terms and conditions and et cetera, et cetera. So it's, um, you know, every, every one of these programs, um, is, is hard. That I, everyone is hard and they always sound, I'm, I'm, um, I'm unenthusiastically waiting for the barrage to start with, you know, the Biden trillions of dollars, because what you hear on the news won't, won't, won't be what it is, you know, it'll, it'll sound like it's just mu- money coming in by the, by the plane load being dropped in on a parachute. Do what you want with it, except that's what they'll tell the front end of the news media and Andrew and I will get the, the volume of paper in the backend and Angela that will have seven hundred and seventy parameters and we'll come out here and tell you that we can only do this and this with it, so it's, it's going to be.
I think we're in really good shape because they got new lights, more lights out at the airport so that you get the target, they drop all that bank's money, you know?
But we'll get both in, but so, and I think once you hear the next land bank proposal, you'll understand what I'm talking about, I'm just concerned about Andrea's wellbeing and her bandwidth, because there's a lot of aggressive projects, uh, you know, which is, which is what they were formed to do. And the idea was so we got out of the business of doing it, so the municipal government wasn't doing it, we formed an entity, um, so that, so somebody could, and, and, and oh, by the way, they've got a, you know, a different rule set than we do, which gives them some more flexibility to do that, so we'll, we'll, we'll get them back again soon, because I, I think it's important council understands what's going on and Andrew's responsibilities within, within both of those.
But they'll be back in March. Uh, I have one more budget to go through with you and I promise, uh, we can get through it pretty quickly. It is the code budget. Uh, so, um, our code budget looks a little different, not, you know, like, oh, I'm sorry, D twelve.
What is it?
D, D twelve. Uh, we have two code enforcement officers going into twenty-twenty-two, which I am thrilled to report to you. Um, I really, I advocated that we go, that we have two, so we have a little bit of, um, duplicity, I don't know what, it, they're not redundant and they're not duplicative, but there's, um, you know, we have enough work in the city for many more than two code enforcement officers, but it's really good to have two that are able to issue permits uh, and conduct the code enforcement that we need. We also have been fortunate to find a overqualified senior clerk for that position. Um, and she's quite amazing, she's really getting everything into shape and taking care of the office, uh, so that we are able to move for, forward into twenty-twenty-two without, uh, being buried under three years' worth of unfiled paperwork. So she's, um, a godsend to all of us and working out quite well. So those are the three positions that you will see, uh, in the twenty-twenty-two budget, which is what we presently have.
I like that, Andy, I'm gonna start, I'd like to talk to you just a minute about that too, so everybody sees what we did there. We, in converting, uh, both the housing inspector position to code enforcement, you know, we've, we put a much greater emphasis on, uh, the enforcement actions, we're going to be working with the fire department in the coming year to take over some of the, uh, lower level inspections, uh, helping with the grass, the snow, the, uh, the housing inspections, et cetera, we're, we're making a lot of strides, as you all know, we've taken on some of the really bad ones uh, in recent months and we're going to continue that, we had another meth lab, uh, arrest today, ended up not being released or toxic, toxic, so we didn't, um, we didn't enforce the, um.
Condemnation.
The code condemnation, but, uh, but we're, we're working, uh, everyone's working together to do those, so I, I, I've, I hope that council is all seeing the, the improvements, uh, that we're making, there's a lot to do and I, and I know that for every success I give you, you can give me five stories that you'd like to see me working on, but I, but we, we do have an extensive list. Andrew just given me the most updated, I'm going to sit and review with her team again soon, then I'll send it to all of you so you see the priorities, all the things that we're on, what are the, the hot topics that we're on hard. Uh, the court is, uh, I, I think is working more efficiently with us, I think, uh, Judge Lemay, you know, understands the urgency of some of these now. She understands the process, um, uh, better after being on the bench, uh, about a year and, um, and I think she sees what some of the frustrating, uh, points are, so I feel like we're making great strides here, I would certainly ask for council's feedback throughout the year. If you see something, uh, again, say something, uh, likely I can confirm to you it's on our list, but if it's not, we'll certainly get it there and what the status is at any given time. Uh, we, we don't get lucky and, and, and we're able to kind of, uh, kick the door, if you will, on all these, some of them are a lot slower and a lot more methodical to work through, um, but, but some of the chronic offenders, some of the real bad ones that have code violations along with criminal activity, we're, we're just looking for, uh, to use every, every stretch of the law. Not looking to, to unduly, uh, you know, put people out, a lot of unfortunate, um, situations with these, these drug houses and meth houses, as you've got family members that have absolutely nothing to do with those activities, you know, being victimized because people in the house are, are doing that. So we're, we're working through each of those. I do want to talk a second about the clerk, uh, we really are, that position is being budgeted under code enforcement, it's where she spends a good amount of her time now, but, uh, she will be working across Andrea's entire department. I don't, the word clerk, the word secretary, these are all just outdated terms in civil service, but I want to just tell you all, Amy Gouge is a retired lieutenant colonel, US Army, West Point graduate, uh, served in infantry and, uh, forward, uh, units her entire career. Um, she is a, a godsend that after serving at Fordrum, one of her last assignments wanted to stay in the, in the North Country. She was working over at Clarkson University with the ROTC and, uh, saw the opportunity and, uh, came over here, so, uh, you see the salary we pay. Uh, it's a prime example of somebody who just wants to serve and, uh, and work hard and contribute. Uh, she's certainly with the resume she has in her background could, could be making quadruple that, uh, with, with other places. She's a former. She's a former logistician, uh, so she's an organizer, um, she's a, she's a supplier and, uh, and we have lots of need for both of those, so, um, Greg Mallett Shop, uh, was a mess and not a mess because he was not doing his work, just because he was one person, lots of things going on, thirty years of stuff, but she's, she's brought a media organization to that, so we've got ability to access things easier, get our hands on documents and then honestly, we just, we just look better, uh, in there, so we're going to be, excuse me, using her talents to help organize some other areas and, and bring efficiencies. Uh, she's helped us put together various succinct briefings and, uh, documents, so that again, the, the good examples of one will be the, the code enforcement document, she's helped put that together, so when one of you call me or someone calls, we can look quickly to see what's there, we can give a status of where we are with things, so. I encourage you, if you haven't met Amy at some point, to, to stop in down there, she's, uh, she's had a real, a significant career, uh, she's about as humble an operator as you'll, um, as you'll get, uh, she is making significant contributions to us and, uh, she's a value at ten times the money, thank you.
She's the one that, when you look in the door, she's sitting right there, Rob's over here.
Yes, but she's now actually in Greg's old office, room six. Uh, Monday.
So I have to get better, so I was trying to say.
So on D thirteen, um, again, I mean, a lot of the same here, capital equipment, there, uh, there's some office furniture, the desks, um, are literally falling apart uh, in those offices, I, I think that they may be original to the building, but they're, they're not as fancy as those upstairs in my office. Uh, so pretty deplorable state of office furniture, so we really do need to look at, uh, upgrading that. Um, capital, uh, can, capital equipment that is for vehicle leases. Um, capital construction is to, uh, just kind of address some of the moving needs and recarburing paintings and basic things of that nature. Uh, one of the big expenses is, uh, is, uh, point four-two-zero, which is office expense. That line is up, um, this year because in the last two years, I'll say, that expense was covered by the zombie grant and we paid in advance, so it was actually lowered um, for paying in advance, but we currently use a system, the acronym is BAS or IPS. It's an antiquated platform that our entire code office operates on, as well as our fire department for doing commercial inspections, housing inspections, fire inspections, um, and issuing all of our building permits. Uh, I do not presently use it, so I cannot speak as a direct user, but no one tells me anything positive about it. So for the last two years, um, I've heard nothing but criti- criticism of that, uh, how it is not user-friendly, there is no good support. And so we are transitioning to a, a platform called Iwork. It is a platform that is used by Messina and Potstam, as well as many other communities across New York State, but those are two local communities that use it. Um, we are making that transition now. The cost of it on an annual subscription is not any different than what we presently pay for BAS IPS, but the initial startup fee is an additional six thousand dollars. Um, so that is primarily the expense associated with that line. Um, everybody has rave reviews on it, it has unlimited users, so everybody at City Hall or every city employee can have access to it and it will allow, allow for a much more streamlined permitting process and it will make online application and submission of building permits online uh, accessible to the public, so that's really great news, uh, our.
Be able to transfer over the old.
Yes, yep, and we actually have that through March thirtieth of this year, I think it's the thirty-first. Um, so we'll be going live on January third, uh, with Iwork and then we'll have a, a few months to just make sure that we get everything we need, um, work out all the bugs, so it's that, the timeline actually works really well to support this transition, something that we're very excited about. We did several demonstrations, um, with Iwork before kind of moving in this direction that included, um, other departments, fire, code, um, myself, Jennifer Ashley from our office, to kind of think about how this would impact everybody. It will also allow for site plan reviews and variance applications to be online, they're online now in a PDF form, but they will be in a much more user-friendly format going forward, so. I think it's a great opportunity for the city and that is what is in that line and why it's an increase from years past. Uh, of note is, uh, so professional training, I'll just say, New York State requires that both, that code officers uh, receive twenty-four hours of training annually, so we have two code enforcement officers, that includes, uh, the cost of buying any updated books and training materials and making sure that they get their twenty-four hours of training annually. Um, and then contracted services, uh, that's contracted services and consultants, those are the two lines that essentially cover all costs associated with conducting code enforcement. Uh, and we are taking a much more aggressive approach to code enforcement, trash removals, condemnations, everything you've read about in the paper and seen online, um, demolition of hazardous structures. Yes, and it, we do receive some, some of those are paid back, um, but anything that isn't paid back is levied back onto the taxes and oftentimes it does result eventually, um, in the foreclosure of a property, because those fees can be pretty significant. Uh, so on average, a demolition of a, of a residential structure is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, so that alone doesn't go very far.
Glad to see the city being cleaned up.
From a revenue perspective, you do see, uh, the code enforcement, that's twenty thousand dollars, that's when people do pay back. People do often pay back, uh, the garbage fees, those are the things that, you know, they can be fifteen hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars, but oftentimes people will pay those back, uh, and then building permit, permit fees at thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, are there questions on code enforcement?
No, looks good.
Sure you just don't want to listen to me talk anymore?
No, no, you're not.
That is all that I have for you and I'm happy to entertain questions on any of them, um, other than that, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Andrea.
But I don't think you're done, I think that they have something for you.
I think we'll hold, uh, we'll hold the other item we're going to do, we'll, we'll get it in the next meeting, I, I wanted to just, uh, do some discussion about revenue, but I think it's a, it's a little, little deeper dive than anybody's probably wanting to get into at eight-ten, so. So Mayor, we're good if, if you're good. So I think, uh, the next date for us, uh, the next, the next key date will be the public hearing, uh, on Monday. Uh, so my recommendation to council is, I think, I think we've covered, uh, everything here, I'll double back with Council Rees on the, a couple of things that I think you might have missed that one night. But then I think we've hit every page in here, uh, I'm just going through now to just verify my notes. Um, I think we've hit everything, the only thing I did, uh, I'll, I'll be back to all of you in email, was just kind of the discussion, I thought we'd had last meeting about the, kind of that, that last of that little list of the, um, I'm, I'm just using generically charitable organizations, most of them are, are charitable. Um, but I think, uh, Dan, to your question earlier about losing the money, so like the chamber, for instance, definitely lost money, didn't make any money, didn't pay any money, so I, I think most everybody will fit, will fit in the definition of, of funding through there, so. At the council meeting on Monday, we'll have the proposed list that we've got and we've screened, we've edited and what our, what our recommendations will be going forward on that, on that money for you, so. So I think the next thing for the budget that's, uh, probably efficient for us is we do the public hearing, council will then heard from all the department heads, heard all, you know, from all the city staff on the, on the applicable pages, you'll have heard from the public and then from there, we can map out a, a plan of how we're going to go forward with, with deliberations and modifications.
Okay.
Sounds good.
It's been, it's been fun, everybody.